Committee of Adjustment, virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform, and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and in-person attendance limitations. This will be a virtual public hearing, and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being monitored by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by their computer, a phone or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. Any registered participants will be participating by audio only. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Hadna Shoni, and the Wendat people, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The committee considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure you include your name, address, and email address, because Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by mail. If you don't agree with our decision, it may be appealed to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local Planning Appeal Tribunal, LPAT. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Today, I will be calling each item in the order listed on the agenda. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee of the application. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals of the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Do we have a motion to confirm the minutes of the last meeting? Carl? Yim? Make a motion to confirm the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I would so move that we confirm the minutes of the last meeting.
Okay, secondar? Yim, thank you. All in favor? Minutes approved? Are there any declarations?
Mr. Chairman, can you speak a bit louder? You're not coming across as loud as before.
Okay, well...
Through you, Mr. Chair. The minutes from the last hearing, there were actually two. There was the morning hearing and the afternoon hearing, so just confirming both.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that...
Yes.
Yeah, Carl confirms that. Yim?
Yes.
It's both afternoon and morning meetings, the last time, so there's two meetings actually confirmed. Okay? Okay. All in favor?
I will say the afternoon.
Right, let's have another vote. All in favor of both sets of meetings. Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest of the panel or staff or items in the morning time slot? Yes, Peter?
Yes, item number fifteen, eighteen Chesley. I live in proximity to that address.
Any other declarations of interest? Any deferral requests?
I believe we have a late deferral request for item number five, sixty-three Claremont.
So we'll deal with it when we reach it? Okay, are there any files to be closed?
No, Mr. Chair.
Let us now proceed to number one, four oh seven Ossington Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the two-story townhouse by constructing a third story addition and a rear two-story addition. A new garage will also be constructed in the rear yard having access from the rear lane. On this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. Mr. Sap?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Let me just check this. Okay, panel, do we need a presentation on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, but I don't need a presentation.
Okay, go ahead, Carl.
I wonder, my question relates to drawing A four oh four, the third-floor plan. I don't have difficulty with the way it's proposed, but I don't understand the difference between the green roof and the balcony. It seems to me that it's rather arbitrary where the barrier is between the two, and if both the green roof and the balcony were to be used as a balcony, I'd have real concerns with that. That's my first question. And my second question has to do with whether or not there is overview problems to the north and the south from the balcony as proposed.
So the reason we created the smaller balcony was to limit the size of the platform, and that in turn limits the overlook concerns to the north and the south.
And what is the square footage of the balcony?
I don't have that any need, but it would be under four square meters as permitted by the bylaw.
Okay, the reason I ask is I think it would be prudent if you received approval to limit the size of the balcony as to what is shown on drawing four oh four. Otherwise, the application wouldn't comply with the bylaw, even as varied.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any, panel, any further questions? Or do we have comments or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if no one has any further questions, I'd like to move approval of the application with one condition, and that is that the third-floor balcony be as shown on the submitted third-floor plan drawing A four oh four. With that condition, I think that the proposal is quite reasonable. I don't think the variance is out of line, and what is proposed, I believe, is consistent with the character of the neighborhood in which the site is found.
Carl, would you need to include the green roof if it's beside the balcony to ensure that they don't get joined?
That's actually a good idea, because I am concerned that down the road, they both would be used as a balcony, and then we'd have a real problem. So yeah, no, that change would be fine with me.
Okay, do we have a secondar for the motion? Yes, Peter, thank you. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, was the condition that the green roof also be built so that the balcony does not expand into that area?
Well, in accordance with the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Number two, twenty-five seventy-nine St. Clair Avenue East. Purpose of this application is to construct a two-story detached house with an integral garage, a rear basement walkout, and a rear first-floor deck. On this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, correspondence from Ravine and Natural Features Protection, staff reports from Conservation Authority and Urban Forestry, opposition from Fifty Glenwood, twenty-five seventy-seven, and twenty-five eighty-one St. Clair Avenue East. Mr. Doherty?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Can we have you, for the record, can we have your name and your address and your presentation?
Yes, yes. So my name is Ryan Doherty. I'm a planner at Bows Fields. I'm the agent on behalf of the owner of twenty-five seventy-nine St. Clair Avenue East. I have prepared a presentation, which was submitted last week. If you could kindly pull that up, please. There we go. Thank you. Okay, so I will be pretty brief. So as you mentioned, the owner is proposing to redevelop the existing two-story single detached dwelling with a new two-story single detached dwelling. Second slide, please. So the property is located on the south side of St. Clair Avenue East and backs onto the Taylor Massey Creek ravine slope. As you can see, the property is quite narrow and deep. Next slide, please. So this is the existing condition of the site, which is a two-story detached dwelling with a projecting two-story garage. Next slide, please. So, and this is the proposal, the front elevation for a two-story house, which has been designed with a brick facade featuring a metallic roof and awning elements. It also features an integral garage, rear deck, and walk-in basement. I want to note that an original application for this file was submitted in May 2020, which required several additional variances than what we're currently requesting. We worked with City Planning to alleviate their concerns and reduce the overall number of variances. Examples of this include a decrease of the front and rear porches, lowering the main floor, and increasing the front yard setback. And City Planning did not file a report in the additional submission. So we've also worked with adjacent neighbors to address concerns with the design of the south facade of the house, as shown here. So a revised set of plans dated May fifteenth were submitted, which reflect aesthetic changes to the south facade, but do not impact any of the variances. Next slide, please. So this is the site plan. The house will be set back one point two meters from the side lot lines, two point two meters from the rear long-term stable top of bank line, which is that thick black line on the south side of the proposal on the right image, and five point seven four meters from the front lot line. Next slide, please. So we're requesting a handful of variances, and I'll first touch on height. So we are proposing a height of eight point eight four meters, which is about thirty-four centimeters of what's permitted in the bylaw. There have been forty-nine approved height variances in the surrounding neighborhood since 2008. Forty-four of these variances approved heights of eight point five meters or greater, including twenty-nine between nine and ten meters. Next slide, please. We're also proposing a thirty-five-centimeter increase above the permitted exterior sidewall height, which is meant to accommodate a functional layout of the house, particularly the slight elevation distance between the first floor and the finished dining room floor. The difference we're proposing is about equivalent to a ruler stick, and in my opinion is very minor and will not be noticeable from the street. Next slide, please. So in terms of density, we are proposing zero point nine four FSI. I want to note that this figure is inflated due to the location of the stable top of bank line, as lands below the stable top of bank do not count towards the site area used to calculate density. So if we were to apply the proposed GFA of the house to the actual total lot area, which is about eleven hundred and forty square meters, the real FSI we're proposing is only zero point three three, which is below the bylaw maximum. I also want to note that there have been forty-three variances approved by the committee in recent years above the required zero point six FSI. Next slide, please. So we're proposing a front yard setback of five point seven four meters, which is well aligned with the other twenty-two variances which have been approved in the surrounding neighborhood. Eighteen of these variances are proposing a front yard setback of five point nine nine meters or less. Next slide, please. And then on a site-specific level, we can see that there's a wide array of setbacks along this stretch of St. Clair Avenue, ranging from approximately three point six up to twenty point four meters. So setback of five point seven four meters would fit right in with this existing character, which is already quite varied. Next slide, please. And so finally, with respect to the setback from the stable top of slope, we have a letter from the TRCA, which provides clearance to the proposal and the requested variances. The letter also confirms that we are in accordance with the TRCA's living city policies, which allow buildings to have setbacks of less than the required ten meters, should they have regard for existing development, which in this case we do. The current house on the site is located about two point two meters from the long-term stable top of slope, and the newly proposed house is going to maintain this two-point-two-meter setback as shown here. So I'll leave it there, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Panel, any questions? All right.
Yes.
Go ahead, Yim.
I have a question. Yes, we have studied the material, and we noticed that you have already in communication with TRCA and also the Ravine Natural Protection, I don't know the P. But we also advise that there's still urban forestry condition. Are there any outstanding issue you still have to resolve in terms of urban forestry?
Not to my knowledge. We did receive an initial urban forestry notice, I believe, May twelfth, which showed no conditions, but then a revised notice was submitted on the twenty-fifth. I guess that was yesterday, just requiring that we submit an application to injure or remove trees, which we're not planning to remove any trees, but we can follow that condition.
That's a way standard one, but they also did not specify. They only say that there's an urban forestry condition that we have given. Just want to know, nothing specific about it. You just have to, that's a way standard procedure to apply for not injuring any trees and things like that, right?
Yeah, that's correct. We haven't received any sort of additional conditions from urban forestry.
Through you, Mr. Chair, there is a late staff report that was received yesterday, asking for forestry condition number one to be applied for this property. It was an oversight on the previous...
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, that's what I was just referring to. Yeah.
Okay, that clarified. A cow's question, that's what.
All right, thank you. Any further questions, panel? Yes?
I have a question. On the site plan, it shows that at the rear, the setback from the long-term stable top of slope is two point two meters on one side, and I think it's eight point something meters. Is that site plan being secured through the TRCA?
As part of a future permit?
That's right. So like, do we need to, if this was to be approved, do we need to ensure that that is maintained? Do we need to add a condition to make to require compliance with the site plan so that no further encroachment into the long-term stable top of slope is, might happen?
So that would be something that is secured through the TRCA, as I sort of touched upon in the presentation. Typically, they do require a ten-meter setback from that long-term stable top of slope, but they do allow, if the existing house is two point two meters on one side, and I think it's eight point one six meters on the other side, as long as we maintain that, TRCA is okay with that. And we are okay with adding a condition to the approval as well.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Yes, I just want to add, actually, we received also a staff report that they have requested that as a condition that should be put in accordance with the revised plan accepted by the Committee of Adjustment May fifteenth. That is part of the recommendation.
Okay, and that's fine with us. Our intention is to maintain that setback, so...
Okay, so Ms. Scassa and Mr. Edmonds?
Hello?
Hello. Ms. Scassa?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Could you introduce yourself and give us your address and let us have your presentation?
I'm here solely as an observer today. I don't have a presentation.
Okay. Please give us your name, please give us your name and your address, just for the record.
Of course, Christina Scassa. My husband, Brian Edmonds, and I live at fifty-four Glenwood Crescent.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. Ammon Tides?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Are you Mrs. Ammon Tides?
Yeah, I'm Mrs. Ammon Hatidis. So I'm the neighbor immediately to the west. I have two concerns. One is there's a very beautiful tree right on our border, and what guarantees do we have that that tree will be protected?
Well, there's a urban forestry condition, number one, that we've been advised is now in place, and so the urban forestry will be looking at protecting that tree, or ensuring it's protected.
So if we have concerns that it's not being protected, do we contact urban forest?
Yes.
The other question I have is, it's a natural corridor for wildlife, and there's no fences between existing neighbors at this time, and there's foxes and deer that walk, travel through this daily. So I would put a request that there are no fences be put up, and that the lighting at the back be not ongoing.
I'm not sure that we have that authority, but you can take that up with the applicant.
That's not an issue with the Conservation Authority?
It's not an issue with the Committee of Adjustments. We're only dealing with, we only deal with variances.
Yeah, okay, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Panel, any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name, but you indicated that there's a tree that's, I gather, on the property boundary with your property, and you're on the west side of the site.
Sorry, I want to...
If you pull up the...
Yeah.
Sorry, on the west side, right?
The west side, yeah.
Okay, I don't see the tree on the site plan. Could somebody show me where it is? Because the fact that it's not on the site plan, if I wanted to preserve it, I'd be nervous that it's not shown.
We actually got something that said that it was approved for being destroyed back a year ago.
Okay, so I don't want to raise your expectations. The forestry condition basically says that the applicant has to work with forestry if they have to take trees down, but I don't see anything on the survey, which is now on the screen. Can you see that? And the site plan, I don't see the tree that you're referring to, and I'm just wondering where it is.
The tree?
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
Maybe the applicant can better explain where it is, and if in fact it's slated for demolition or removal.
So I just want to note that we're not proposing to remove any trees as part of, you know, the proposal. In terms of the tree that's being referred to on the west side, perhaps the neighbor could clarify which one. I'm assuming it's, is it the one located in the rear?
Yes.
In your rear yard? Yeah? Along the property line?
Along the property line, correct.
I think it's that star there. It's not...
Star, yeah.
Yeah. So we don't have any intention of removing that tree, and we are going to follow the condition of urban forestry and file for the appropriate permit. So I'm not sure what was sent out that you received that said the tree was going to be removed. Perhaps that was part of one of the older schemes of the proposal. As I mentioned, it's been changed a couple of times now as we've worked with city staff, but we're not proposing to remove the tree.
Okay, that's helpful, because, yeah, that was sent out some time ago, so that makes sense.
And it doesn't appear, madam, that we could put a condition on relative to that tree, because as I look at it, it isn't on the subject property, it's on your property, but you do have the assurance of the agent that there's no plans to remove it or to endanger it anyway. And it's not in the construction anyway.
That's true. My other question is, this property is built on landfill, and the soil is extremely unstable. What efforts are going to be made in the building process to protect the houses on either side?
Yeah, madam, that again is not part of our mandate. That's for building, and if there's, and I'm sure they will be monitoring the situation to, because there is a slope here, and so I'm sure they'll be monitoring the situation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
David Labangi?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good morning, my name's David Labangi. I live at twenty-five eighty-seven St. Clair Avenue East. So I'm four doors east of the proposed development. I'm here to speak on the applicant. I believe that the variances requested are minor, and that the proposal is desirable for the appropriate development of the building and land. In the case of the application, the variances noted are already afforded to a number of neighboring homes in the area, and there is a longstanding precedent of similar variances afforded to homes in the area. The application does not, importantly, I think, seek to encroach further upon the established rear yard setback, so provided it is no further setback than two point two meters, it's consistent with the existing structure, and I think that I can support it on that basis. The applicants have assembled a detailed application that's supported by analysis, local precedent, and input from city staff to ensure the intent of the zoning bylaws and official plans maintained. I believe the variances requested are considered, again, to be minor, and that they are desirable for the appropriate development of the building and land, particularly in this neighborhood. So for those reasons, I would express support for the application. I would note that I worked closely with... Um, I would note that I worked closely with the planner, uh, on this matter, because I did have a number of concerns, um, and they worked with me to allay those concerns in a collaborative way, and if we can pull up, um, in the, um, package that was submitted, there's a, a letter dated May eighteenth, uh, from the planner. I believe it's in the same PDF as the presentation was. I believe it's the first, second, uh, page in that.
So when you say the planner, you mean Bosefields?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. So which numbered...
I believe it's in this document, but it's at the, uh, very beginning. Uh, is that the first page of that document?
Yes.
I think if we continue scrolling up, it seems to show that there's documents above that, um, to the very beginning of the document, I believe. Nope, that's not the letter. There's a letter dated May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. It was submitted with the revised plans. Perhaps my, uh, friend from Bosefields can, um, direct you to where it is.
Yep, so, um, you just passed it. It's just the, the PDF right, right there. Um, David's referring to the condition at the bottom, you can see in italics, um, yeah, right there.
That's correct. So i- in working with, uh, Bosefields and, and the owner, to allay some of my concerns regarding the application, um, we agreed that, um, there would be a condition, uh, if there is an approval in the form that is set out in italics there, that the south elevation shall be built substantially in accordance with the revised plans, um, dated May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, um, and, and that they are, the applicant is amenable to that condition. So, subject to any questions, uh, that's all, uh, I have to say today.
Okay. Uh, panel, any questions of this witness? Okay, let's move on to Mr. and Mrs. Harris.
Hello?
Yes.
Uh, Diane Harris here.
Yes.
Um, my concerns are regarding the amount of...
Can we have your, Mrs. Harris, can we have your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty-five eighty-one. This property that we're discussing is roughly next to me.
All right, twenty-five eighty-one St. Clair Avenue East?
Correct.
Thank you.
My concern is, um, the amount of, of building on the land is going to be altered here. Um, as it was said, these houses are not in, uh, staple soil. We have issues as it is with drainage, and I'd like to be, uh, advised if I can expect problems from water runoff because of the, the change of concrete to, to soil.
Wow. Mrs. Harris, again, that, that's not the mandate of the Committee of Adjustments.
Okay. So where would I put my concern?
Well, I think you have to speak to the building department.
Okay. You see, um, the way it stands, there are wildlife that go through our back, we have the slope, we have the deer that come up from the ravine, and if the water runoff changes the slope, or changes our property, it is a concern, so that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Panel, any questions? All right, Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Yeah. Do you have any comments with respect to, uh, the, uh, concerns raised by your neighbors?
Well, just, just to, to sort of reiterate your point, the concerns relating to soil degradation and, and engineering-related items will be handled as, as part of an engineering review during the building permit stage. Um, and I just want to reiterate that we are maintaining the existing setback, um, that the house currently has, so we, we are really sort of fitting into the existing footprint of the house for the most part, um, so we're not encroaching any farther into that ravine, and, and the letter from the TRCA that we have also, uh, reiterates that as well.
All right. Thank you. Panel, any questions? Okay.
Excuse me, may I add something to that?
Uh, who is that speaking?
It's Jo- it's John Harris.
No, I'm sorry.
I worked on it.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Harris, we, you, uh, you, you get an opportu- you've had your opportunity, or your wife took advantage of the opportunity, and we're now in committee, uh, so there's no more, uh, we're not, uh, a- accepting any further presentations. Thank you. Any comments, panel, or do we have, uh, a motion? Jim? Yes, Jim?
I just, I just unmuted myself. Okay, um, if there aren't any more further questions, um, I think that this proposal has been worked out quite extensively with the different departments and also with the labors, and I would like to, uh, move for approval, and it's, it's a great improvement from last, uh, last proposal system, and I will, uh, include the forestry condition number one, and also the condition, uh, recommended by the staff report. The south elevation is going to be built in accordance with the joint submitted May fifteenth, and, um, and I think these are the only two conditions.
Can we add a condition, Jim?
Yes.
Yeah.
Another condition to tie it to the, uh, site plan as well?
Oh, yes. Uh, okay, all right, because of the stable van, actually, that also has to go through extensively, and, and engineering before, uh, review anyway, yeah, but I will tie that.
All right. Carl, did you have any comment?
I, I was gonna make the same point that Nimrod raised earlier, the objective of tying it to the site plan, I just wanted to make sure that was part of the motion, and it is, so I'm happy with that.
Yeah. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, the letter from the agent, um, was dated actually May nineteenth. The condition that people spoke to, um, said it was received by Committee of Adjustment on May eighteen. It's just a little tweak, if that's the drawings that you wish to attach to the decision, that it refer to May nineteenth, because that's when we received it.
Okay.
Oh, oh, okay, I, I got it from the, from the, from the report, okay. Yeah. No objection.
Okay.
Yeah.
Who seconded? Carl, did you second the motion?
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm pleased to second the motion. I think the proposal is a good one. I'd like to, in doing so, I'd like to compliment the applicant. I, I, the collaboration was, uh, very refreshing, and I, as you can see, it was very helpful, and the submission by Mr. Doherty was excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, all in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you all.
Next application is number three fifty North Line Road, and the purpose of this application is to, uh, alter the, uh, one-story warehouse building by constructing a rear one-story addition and to create additional parking spaces on the lot. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, email correspondence from Transportation Services, and a staff report from Transportation Services. Mr. Vario Costas?
Well, Costas, Gus Farlow Costas.
Okay. I'm, would, would you go ahead, sir?
Yeah, actually, uh, it's, it's Anthony Dogg Ross, always speaking today. I'm the agent for, uh, for the, uh, for the owner. Uh, my address is four zero six Portchamp Avenue, um, and just, uh, just to clarify, what, what we're proposing is actually a, a loading dock, um, so I guess the, the one-story that, that's being, uh, talked about is, is actually a loading dock with an option for a covered fiberglass, uh, roof in the future. So what this is, it's a, it's a warehouse, and, uh, they're looking to have the trucks...
So, so, Mr. Dogg Ross, I just want to be clear, by what you mean with an option, is, is anything gonna be constructed now beside the loading dock?
It will be covered. So, yeah, they, they, not a, not, it'll be over the loading dock, uh, so they will, he just confirmed, he will build the fiberglass structure over the loading dock.
Now?
Now. Yes, yes.
Okay.
If we...
All right. So, sounds like a rear one-story addition. Is that correct?
Uh, okay.
I, I want to...
Yes, but I just wanted to make it clear, yes.
Yeah. I, I just want to be sure that we have the right purpose.
Yeah, but it won't be heated, uh, there will be no heating or plumbing to it, it's just a covered, covered, yes, one-story.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, so the, the variances, yeah, so based on bylaw, parking is required, and, uh, we did read the staff report for transportation on getting approval for the boulevard parking, which, uh, we're willing to apply for and get that done.
Okay. Panel, do you have any questions? All right. No questions. Uh, all right, thank you, sir. Take it into committee. Any, any comments, or do we have a motion? Yes, Nimrod?
I'd like to move a motion to approve the requested variances. I believe they are minor in nature, and that the approval be subject to Transportation Services conditions.
All right. Seconder? Yes, Peter? All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number four fourteen to sixteen Austin Terrace. Purpose of this application is to, uh, alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling municipally recognizes sixteen Austin Terrace by constructing a rear second-story deck and converting the basement, fourteen Austin Terrace, into an additional dwelling unit. A total of four dwelling units will be provided on the lot. With this application, we have, uh, material submitted by the applicant, uh, emails and reports from City Planning, Transportation Services, and that's it. Christian Chan, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Uh, this is Christian Chan here of C Two Planning, Agent and Land Use Planner for the applicant, um, Robert O'Meady and Ruth and Lockhart.
Okay, so, uh... All right.
So I have submitted to the committee a, a planning rationale that I believe has been uploaded since May nineteenth, and just to explain, this is a, a two-part request, in fact, um, the first being requested variances, and the second, I am requesting of the committee, uh, a, a reduction or waiver of the fees pursuant to sixty, uh, section sixty-nine-two of the Planning Act. So if we can, uh, possibly deal with both items separately, uh, I'm in your hands whether you would like to understand or, uh, hear my, uh, planning rationale for the development application...
Yeah.
Or, or, um, the reduction or waiver of fees first.
Yeah. All right, no, let's hear your planning rationale first, uh, but don't forget, you only have five minutes altogether, so...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, very well. So, yes, this, uh, site is addressed as two addresses, number fourteen to sixteen, fourteen forming the easterly portion of the building and sixteen forming the westerly portion. The westerly portion, number sixteen, is occupied as a single unit by the owners, and number fourteen has, uh, contains two, uh, dwelling units on the main floor and on the second floor. Uh, both are two-bedroom dwelling units, and the proposal is to convert the existing basement on number fourteen, the easterly portion, into a, an additional one-bedroom unit, uh, of about six hundred square feet. Uh, so the variances are reflective of what's being requested. There's also variance for the rear deck that has been previously constructed on the owner's property in number sixteen, which is driving the requested depth variance. So as resulting from the dwelling unit, additional dwelling unit proposal, uh, there are four dwelling units proposed on the site in the site-specific bylaw, uh, prevent stop from happening, and, and therefore we are requesting relief pursuant to, uh, some of the variances here. This is also triggering a parking, uh, space variance where a minimum of four is required, whereas we're proposing two. Uh, Transportation Services have, uh, voiced no concern with regards to this, and in, and also in relation to the, uh, the development, which is in, in the vicinity of the DuPont, uh, subway station. The depth of twenty-four-point-two-three meters being proposed because the rear deck, uh, has three walls, and when a platform has three walls, it is considered as, as the building's depth. The FSI is, uh, proposes one-point-zero-two times the area of the lot. Uh, this is the existing FSI of, of the building. The basement unit is not contributing to the FSI because it is not, uh, considered above grade, and the, uh, rear yard setback that is being proposed is for the proposed rear yard deck. Uh, the main walls of the building are not proposed to be closer to the rear lot line. Uh, there are a number of properties in the vicinity that have small rear yard setbacks. As you can see, the building does take up, uh, most of the entirety of the lot, and, and it's charac- the, the immediate context is characterized by smaller rear yard setbacks. Uh, with regards to variance number seven for, uh, soft landscaping, this is the existing condition on the site. However, the variance has been identified by the examiner, and we are requesting relief from that condition. The existing, uh, rear yard is entirely comprised of parking spaces underneath two carports that are behind the rear of each of the sides of the, of the building. So from our opinion, uh, the four tests are, are met, and, um, the, in our opinion, the proposal, the proposed variances are minor.
Mr. Chan, you're, you're running out of time. You should go into your second issue.
Yes, so the second, uh, request is under, uh, section sixty-nine-two of the Act of Reduction or Waiver of Fees. A Committee of Adjustment in processing an application may reduce the amount or waive the requirement for the payment of fee in respect of the application, where the committee is satisfied that it would be unreasonable to require payment in accordance with a tariff. Now, just to explain, this application was made in July twenty-twenty. Uh, the applicant paid the fee of sixteen-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. It was five months before, uh, Committee of Adjustment staff reached back out to me and said that the, there was a, an error in the fee that was assessed, and that the fee, what that was supposed to be paid was the full fee of forty-eight-hundred-and-seven-and-twenty-eight, and also because of in order to comply, uh, because construction of the basement unit had commenced, is that doubling of the fee, uh, was being charged. So my client had to pay ninety-six, uh, hundred dollars and fourteen cent, uh, for, ninety-six-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, uh, for a doubling of the C of A fee for the port, for the additional, uh, dwelling unit in the basement, uh, and in that time, for a five-month delay, to identify the error, uh, there was loss of construction time, unable to get a permit, uh, loss of rental income for the, for the additional unit, increased cost to provide the additional rental unit on top of the development charges that are going to be imposed. Um, and it was five months upon that time when it was realized by staff that the fee, uh, was the incorrect fee originally for a four-unit building, and on top of that, a doubling of the fee. And under the Planning Act under section sixty-nine-one, it's clear that, uh, a fee that is, um, processing of an application made in respect to a planning matter is designed, and this is, I'm reading this specifically from, from the Planning Act, section sixty-nine-one, the tariff shall be designed to meet only the anticipated cost of the municipality or to the Committee of Adjustment in the imposition of a fee. And so I, I am appealing to the committee, uh, to, to reduce the fee to the original amount, uh, of forty-eight-hundred-and-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents, uh, because in my, in... uh, because in my, in, in my submission, my respectful submission, that the, the doubling of the fee is, is, does not meet the test under section sixty-nine-one, that, that the fee is designed to meet only the anticipated cost of the municipality. And this is an undue adverse penalty that is going to apply, uh, to, to my clients in this particular situation, uh, especially, it should the, uh, variances be approved for the, for the additional rental or dwelling unit.
Right, Mr. Chan, I, I, so you're asking us to waive the penalty, not so much, I mean, you're saying it's a doubling of the fee, but it seems to me it was a penalty imposed because your client commenced construction without approval. Did they have a building permit?
They didn't have the building permit. So the purpose of the variance application is to get, is to, is to seek approval for the variances and then immediately proceed to get a building permit for the construction. I am advised by the client that they have been in communication with Toronto Buildings with regards to the, the construction in the basement. So, as of current right now, the frame, the framing is up and the electric is in, but the building permit has not been, um, issued.
So, uh, all right, I, Sylvia, is, is, it, it seems to me there's a difference between, uh, the fee, which, which is likely dealt with by section sixty-nine-two and, and the penalty imposed in this case.
So, there's a couple of things here. We have a policy in the municipal code in terms of how we charge fees, but also the request for any partial, um, refund must be made in writing to the Deputy Secretary Treasurer, and it's for them to decide on any partial or full refund fees. It's not up to committee.
Okay, so, Mr. Chan, uh, I was surprised you raised that issue because it wasn't in the material. And for once, I was right, it should have been something in writing goes to the Deputy Secretary Treasurer, not to us. So, we don't have any authority, it appears.
Well, I mean, it's, uh, respectfully, sir, it, it seems to be a legal question here because in, in sixty-nine-two, it does say a committee of adjustment has the power to make those decisions, if the committee is satisfied that it would be reasonable.
There appears to be a procedure, sir, and the procedure is, and you, you make the application in writing. The sec- the deputy, if the deputy secretary, uh, makes a decision, uh, maybe she comes to committee for approval, I don't know, uh, but, um, no application was made in writing.
Okay, so I'll, I'll be sure to submit that if, if, if staff can inform us of that, can, that act, uh, request could still be made.
So, if you go to the C of A website, the refund policy is, is there for you to read. So it should be denoted as to how to request a partial refund.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, do Mr., Ms., Ms. Lockhart, Mr. Omeade, are, are they going to speak?
Do you want to hear from me?
No, well, I, with all due respect, I think I've heard, uh, what your agent has to say, and I don't think that we need anything further.
I appreciate that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I just feel that our application, we moved a little too quickly, but it is in, uh, accordance with the neighborhood of, uh, fourplexes all along Austin Terrace. Our neighbor, for instance, in number twelve has two basement apartments, uh, we only are requesting one.
Okay, thank you. Panel, do you have any questions, or do we take it into committee? Okay. Any comments, or does somebody have a motion?
I'm happy to start off, I, I, not touching the refund question, which I had some problems with, but I think this application on its own and the merits of it are good. I think it's creating an additional unit in a, an established neighborhood, and, and that's positive. I see no negative impacts of this. And I think most of the variances being requested are because of this, I guess these lots have merged on title. So we're talking about a fourplex instead of two. So, uh, I'm happy to move a motion to approve the application with no conditions.
I do have a, a comment. Um, can we add a condition to tie it to the site plan? Because I think the applicant indicated that the depth, uh, variance is being triggered because the, uh, the deck at the rear has three sides. And so, um, that granting that variance then would tie it to the site plan.
That's a good point, I'll add that in, that the approval be sub- subject to the, um, substantially in accordance with the site plan.
Yes, Carl?
Peter, would you be open to another condition? There, the, there is a proposal to put, uh, screening around the second-floor deck. But at least on the drawings that I've got, at the scale, I can't figure out what it is. I think that the screening around the deck is important because otherwise there's a considerable amount of loss of privacy. So, would you be open to, uh, a condition that the second-floor deck is to be screened with, um, uh, permanent, um, screening materials for, for the purposes of, uh, protecting privacy?
Certainly, sounds good. Um, one and a half meters minimum from, from the floor.
Yeah, then the standard would be good, yeah.
Yeah, makes sense, I'm open to that.
All sides, Carl?
Yes, please. Mr. Chairman, with those conditions, I'm happy to second the motion.
Okay, thank you, all in favor? Have your approval, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Committee.
Next item is number five, sixty-three Clermont Street. Purpose of this application is to, uh, alter the existing one-and-a-half-story detached dwelling containing two dwelling units into a three-story detached dwelling containing three dwelling units by constructing a south-side ground-floor addition, a second-story addition with a rear second-story deck and a third-story addition with a front deck and a rear third-floor balcony. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, correspondence from planning, transportation, and buildings, and opposition, and we have correspondence and opposition from fifty-nine, sixty-five, fifty-eight, sixty-seven, fifty-five, sixty-five and a half, sixty-seven, eight, sixty-two, six, and sixty-one Clermont Street. Mr. Domingos?
Yes, uh, good morning, this is Ben Domingos, the, uh, agent, um, uh, representing the owners of sixty-three Clermont. My address is one thirty-three Evans Avenue, Toronto.
Thank you. Can, can we please have your presentation?
We, we, uh, have actually submitted a request for deferral to give time for the, um, the owners to, to, uh, to meet with the neighbors, discuss their concerns, uh, regarding their concerns about the minor variances and they're, uh, they're looking to, uh, respond to those concerns, clarify some of their questions, and they're even open to, um, making changes, revisions to the design.
All right, so I'm going to canvas the, uh, your neighbors that are here, uh, to see their position with respect to the deferral. Mr. Newman?
Yes?
Are you in favor of a deferral today?
Yes, I am in favor of a deferral today.
Thank you. Uh, Claire Bambro?
Uh, she's not with us today.
She's not here. Susan Hammond?
Neither is she.
Okay, all right, so, uh, we have a request for a deferral. Do we have any comments, any questions, or do we have a motion? Yes, Carl? Carl, we can't hear you, Carl.
Sorry, my apologies. This application, as you indicated, has a lot of opposition. Um, and going through the opposition, I think many of the points that were raised are really quite valid. I would have had a great deal of difficulty, uh, with this application in its current form. So I think a deferral to allow the applicant to work with the, um, the community to see if there isn't a, an alternative that enjoys more widespread support is a good idea. Therefore, I'd like to move the deferral.
Do we have a sec-, Peter, second that motion? Thank you, all in favor? Have your deferral, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Number six? Sixty-St. Hubert's Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a second-story addition and an integral garage. With this, with this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, uh, correspondence from planning and engineering and opposition from sixty-two St. Hubert. Parisa Amiri? Yeah?
Hi, this is Parisa Amiri, I'm the architect on the five. Uh, the purpose of this, uh, application is to get relief from three variances that be, uh, faced with the design of this house. And, uh, we don't have any objection from the planning and the, uh, uh, urban forestry, and even the traffic because, uh, like they're proposing the integral garage. And, uh, it, it was no garage, uh, originally to the house. Uh, so do you want me to present the application, or do you have any question?
No, I'd like you to present it because we have, uh, there is opposition, so we'd better have a presentation.
Okay, sure. Yes, uh, can I have the site plan on there? Okay. This is the site plan and the bungalow that you're working on, this is the survey. Uh, this is the, yeah, this is the site plan that you're working on and we are proposing, uh, side addition to, uh, incorporate the garage. And, uh, the history of this design, it back to two thousand and nineteen, we designed the house with only, uh, proposing the second floor. And even with that, we had to go to the committee because we didn't have any garage and, uh, the FSI would be, uh, more than allowed, which is forty-five percent. And, uh, because of the trend in the neighborhood, uh, like all the other houses getting built around the neighborhood, my client decided to redesign it to have the integral garage and, uh, propose the second, uh, floor addition. So we redesigned it and then go back to the zoning review and we are here for the relief that, uh, we are asking for. Uh, the lot is private, uh, thirty, uh, one foot, foot two inches by one hundred. And then, uh, the existing footprint of the, uh, one-story is pretty long and, uh, we are not touching anything to the back. Uh, we are only proposing the, uh, integral garage, which has, uh, we had to do a little bit addition toward the, uh, south, which we don't trigger the side setback, and, uh, proposing the second-floor addition. Uh, the existing footprint of the house is already, uh, thirty-five percent of the lot coverage and, uh, we believe we are, uh, in, within the range of the approved lot coverage in the neighborhood. And we are asking for thirty-eight, uh, thirty-eight point eighty-two. And they are precedent in the same street that they are, they have been approved for four, like seven St. Hubert has been approved for forty-two percent, fifteen St. Hubert has been approved for forty-seven percent, fifty-seven St. Hubert has been approved for forty-four percent, eighty-five St. Hubert has been approved for forty-three percent, and one hundred St. Hubert has been approved for one, uh, one, forty-one percent. And, uh, even Cadorna Avenue, which is, uh, one street toward west of St. Hubert and the backyard of this property is, uh, meeting the backyard of the other street property has been approved for may, uh, for way over, uh, thirty-five percent. Like twenty-five Cadorna has been approved for forty-seven, forty-seven percent, thirty Cadorna fifty point five, thirty-four Cadorna fifty-six, fifty-one Cadorna forty-seven, eighty-two Cadorna forty-seven, one oh seven Cadorna forty-six point six, one-two-five Cadorna eighty-four percent, one-four-two Cadorna forty-four, forty-three percent. And, uh, in terms of the site, uh, we believe we are, uh, we are with the, um, can I have floor plans, please? This is site plan and, uh, main floor and second floor. Yes, this is, this is, this is main floor that, uh, we proposed. If you look at the floor plan, uh, everything per- pretty much stayed as it is. Only, uh, we are touching a little bit to the front to accommodate the entrance and, uh, the side addition that we are proposing. It's, uh, I'm working in this neighborhood a lot and living in this neighborhood and this is a very, uh, demanding, uh, kind of a living, uh, by whomever wants to come to the, uh, to this area and wants to live in this area. And, uh, on the second floor, again, we have, uh, we propose four, four bedrooms, which again, very, uh, normal.
Ms., 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 Ms. Mary, your time is, uh, running out, would you please wrap up?
Okay, sure, yeah. And in terms of the height, uh, can I have the elevations up, uh, main elevation? Yeah, this is the main elevation. And, uh, if we look at the main elevation, only, only at the side side, which we are above the, uh, garage, we are asking for one meter, uh, more than the bylaw limit. But for the rest of the house, can I have this, one of the side elevation up? Yeah, for the rest of the house, we are only asking for, uh, seven point seventy-five meter, which is, uh, like pretty normal again for the neighborhood, even with the slope proof. Uh, the side, uh, wall, the main wall height, uh, would be approved around eight meter and we've got approved in any, uh, many other, um, properties. And for the FSI, there are, uh, example on the same street, one hundred St. Hubert, uh, has been approved for eighty-five percent, although it was a new construction.
Ms., Ms., Ms. Mary, Ms. Mary, your time is up, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so before proceeding with Mr. Murray, I have to take a health break. Lost everybody else. Did we lose Yim and Nimrod or they? Or they probably took advantage as well? Oh, okay. Everybody's here. Mr. Murray? Is he here? Uh, Mr. Murray? Hello, Mr. Murray?
Yes, uh, good morning Chair. Through you to the committee.
Yes, could we have your address, please, for the record?
Alright, I'm, uh, the resident owner of sixty-two Saint Hubert Avenue, immediately north of the property in question, sixty-Saint Hubert.
Okay.
I'd like to take this opportunity to express my opposition to the application. I feel the proposal is far an excessive of the size permitted by the bylaw. In fact, over a hundred and sixty-four percent of what the bylaw allows. Similar project in nineteen eighty-nine by a previous owner was, with a smaller FSI, was rejected by East York Committee of Adjustment as not minor in nature. I respectfully submit it does not constitute a minor variance. Before I start the objections, I wish to raise a couple of points of order, I'll call them. Uh, there are several errors and omissions in the paperwork that has been submitted by the applicant. I direct your attention to the east elevation. You can have that up on the screen. The, uh, the, uh, east elevation of the, uh, floor plans. That, uh, possible? Uh, although it's identified as east elevation in the center lower, uh, section, the, the title block shows it as the root plan. If you go to the previous, uh, page. Yeah, that's the one. This is located as the, or identified as the root plan, when in fact it's, uh, titled the third floor plan. There's no evidence of an architect, engineer, designer, or even a drafts person's initials on these drawings. I guess nobody wants to take credit for them. They are full of flaws and, and errors. Uh, I'd like you to please refer to the first photo of my submission on the rear deck of sixty-two. Uh, it's, I believe it's the first photo in the submission that I made. That's it. That's it. And, uh, I think that the, uh, if you look at, if you compare this to the site plan, uh, it misrepresents the proximity to the driveway and general shape of my deck. It's actually about thirteen inches, so it's, it's extremely close. Uh, the, uh, I could go on with the errors, uh, if you give me extra time. Otherwise, I think you get my drift. Three strikes, that's actually four, if you're right. Uh, yet these errors and certainly more are likely for you to make such an important decision based on badly flawed documents. I'd also like to comment with the comparisons to Cadorna densities and variances. Cadorna's in a different zoning, uh, uh, area and the rules are completely different. The back dense changes. For brevity, I'll just hit the high points, the variances based on want, not need. I totally understand the want, but what about the rights of the neighbors to have their world turned upside down because someone wants more? And, uh, their fair share. We end up living next to a monster at home, totally out of scale with the property size. We use our density protection supposedly guaranteed by the bylaw. My property will be permanently and negatively impacted by the increased shadowing, reduced light for wellness and plant growth. Tall buildings act as a sail to magnify harmful wind speeds. The oversized FSI format, multiple balconies make it attractive to future short-term party rentals and problems that ensue. The existing furnace, water heater, mechanical room is being moved west closer to my rear deck, which as I pointed out, is very close to the driveway. Uh, and that brings noise issues from the exhaust discharges closer to my, uh, sanctuary in the backyard. The front yard area bordering sixty-two Saint Hubert shows a new northward extension of the lawn. I have concerns there's a lack of detail as to how this grating and contouring in this area will be restored. It will restrict the use of my driveway and add to street present, presentation fault. Thus, the general purpose of the zoning by law would not have been maintained until test three. Notwithstanding my objections, uh, I ask that the north balcony have a frosted lower modesty. If I'm wrong. As if this is to see someone in another region. If you get my drift, if you need more explanation, I can provide it. I would like to, uh, request the rear balconies have the, uh, one point eight, uh, eight privacy screens north and south. While we have all had challenges through the last year and the large number of obvious errors in these documents undermines my confidence that this project can be carried out in a safe, efficient, and timely manner. I ask the applicant to be directed to review the drawings with greater diligence, due diligence, and correct any errors squeaking the project, be more sensitive to my concerns and re-submitting. I have not received any contact from the cons, from the, uh, applicant to date and, uh, the house is occupied by renters. There, there is no one on site that is actually from that, from the applicant. I believe that, uh, twice during the last year and a half, I've met the applicant just being impassioned about garbage and different things that we talked about. But, uh, the first I heard about this project was the Committee of Adjustment public hearing notice. Uh, please listen to the silence. Be more relaxed, be on the right side of it.
Mr. Murray, your, uh, your time is up. If you could just wrap up?
That is pretty well it. I just, I made a written submission. If, if there are any questions, I'd be open to it.
Alright, thank you. Any questions, panel? No questions. Uh, Miss Amiri?
Yes. Yes, I want to address few, uh, uh, concern of the, of, for the objection. Um, the first concern that, uh, he brought up for the rejection in nineteen ninety-nine by the Committee of Adjustment, I just want to mention the zoning has been changed since, since two thousand and thirteen and the norm of the living has been changed since, since then. And, uh, we are, like, even since five years ago till now, the norm of the living and the, uh, transition from the kind of a houses that, uh, people are living in, especially in East York, hasn't changed a lot as well. Cause myself, I'm living in East York around nine years by now.
Yes, Miss, Miss, Miss Amiri, with respect to the type of houses that have changed, I, I wanted to ask you if there's a, a lot of, uh, second stories being added on, on this street or in the immediate neighborhood?
Yes. Uh, like ninety Saint Hubert across the street has been added second story. One hundred Saint Hubert, uh, is a new construction with second story integral garage. Eight, uh, one hundred, uh, two, one oh two Saint Hubert is a second story addition. Even in this neighbor, like in this pocket, fifty, uh, six Saint Hubert is a second story addition. Uh, they're across the street, uh, another.
Hi, are you still there?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, there are many second floor addition on the street, uh, like, uh, ninety-three second story addition. Eighty-seven is second story addition. Eighty-five is second story addition.
Okay. I don't, I don't think you need to go through all of them. I just want to know if it was
Yes.
a trend in the neighborhood now.
Yes.
Okay.
The trend is adding second story addition. And, uh, in terms of, uh, his concern regarding the, uh, site, uh, survey and the photo that he showed, uh, that, uh, his deck is smaller. Like, I am only using the, uh, survey that has been received from the surveyor and I'm not, uh, and, I'm not, uh, like, uh, measuring anything on the side. I'm just relying on the survey that I've been received. And moreover, we are not doing anything on that, uh, side and, uh, we understand although this is the, uh, private, uh, drive, but, uh, the neighbor on sixty-two has the right of way about, uh, which has been mentioned on the, uh, survey, seventy-nine centimeter on our side. And, uh, we are not touching that. So, uh, there is no, uh, mechanical unit proposed on the side. And, uh, still, uh, we have, uh, another, uh, thirty-four centimeter, uh, from our side, our, uh, our building toward the right of way to have, uh, some, like, access in, in terms of even if, uh, some fence come, wants to come up. And he said that we are triggering, uh, his driveway, but we don't. It's not, uh, his driveway. It's on our side after the right of way and, uh, we are happy to work with, uh, like, with him not to touching the re, existing retaining wall, retaining wall to keep the, keep it as it is. Uh, and we are okay with the, as long as we are okay with the, and I'm sure we are okay with the green area. The other, um, man, the other concern that he brought up with the second story story, we are okay to put the privacy, uh, privacy screen on that balcony. If there is any question or other concerns?
Panel, do you have any questions?
No.
No questions. Thank you. We'll take it into committee now. Any comments or do we have a motion? Yes, Nimrod?
So, I, I noticed that there are many, uh, two-story houses on the street and, um, um, I'm in support of the proposal. I think the variances are minor in nature. Um, I would suggest adding two conditions. One is to have, for the second story rear balcony to have, uh, one point five meter high privacy screening on a north and south side. And that we also add a condition to tie the, uh, building height to the elevation drawings because, uh, there are, that, there are two different height, uh, that, heights that are applying to the overall building. And so that's what I would, uh, put forward.
Alright, do we have a second there? Peter? Alright, all in favor? Carl or, uh, are you opposed, Carl?
No, I, I, I can't support this application at all.
Okay. So Carl, you're, uh, all opposed? Carl? Okay. You have your approval, sir. Madam?
Thank you.
Pardon me. Thank you. Number seven. Sixteen Crookshock, Crook, Crookshank Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling, uh, by removing the existing rear basement walkout and constructing a new front basement walkout and constructing a new rear yard shed. And with this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. And, uh, Mr. Hallawati?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I, I'm Greg Hallawati. I'm the agent for the owner. I'm also an engineer at Mountjoy Structural at thirty-one Mountjoy Avenue. Would you be able to bring up the site plan from the drawings on the first page?
I, I, I don't think we'll really need a presentation, but you, if you have anything you want to tell the committee, go ahead.
Well, I, I just wanted to bring up that these, uh, these two zoning notices, I believe, are, are very minor. Um, and they're basically that we don't meet the, uh, requirements for a minimum seventy-five percent front yard soft landscaping, um, but we didn't meet them with the existing conditions anyways. The current existing soft landscaping area is six point five. The required is seven point eight. Um, and the proposed is four point four. So it's just a reduction of two meters. And, uh, the second one, uh, we exceed the maximum lot coverage for the ancillary structure, which is five percent of the lot. Um, so that's eleven point one three meters square. The proposed is nineteen percent of the area, but that also includes the pergola. Um, so it, the shed is not as big as, as it would have seemed. We're making the roof of the shed a green roof, um, to help with the lost soft landscaping at the front. And also, we're removing the rear, um, walkout, which will also increase the, the soft landscaping. Uh, the purpose of this is to make a nice friendly backyard for their two young kids. Um, and then just to maintain, um, an exit, uh, a basement escape, uh, on the front rather than at the back. They do not want dual occupancy. They're, they're a young family. They have an open concept inside the house. Um, it would require a lot of alterations in order to do that. Um, so that is, is not something that they want.
Alright. Panel, any questions?
No.
Yes, Yim?
I would just want to, uh, clarify, where is the green roof indicated on the site plan or on, um, each drawing that is indicated it's going to be a green roof on the garage?
Oh, uh, you would see it on the, on the section of the, of the garage.
On the section? Okay. And, and it's, okay.
Go ahead, Yim.
It's only embedded to the, uh, garage, why not on the pergola? No.
No, the pergola is just going to be open. It's just for shade. Um, and the, the roof of the garage is what's going to have the, the green roof on it.
Okay. Because I think I could, yeah.
Oh, sorry. There, there was, you just passed it on the, on the last plane, page fifteen, it, it indicates the green roof on there. See, green roof.
It's on joint D five?
Yep, D five point O.
Okay.
Any further questions?
No.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any comments? Do we have a motion? Yes, Carl. Carl?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have any difficulty with this application at all. The reduced landscaping, I think, is in part, uh, an existing condition. I noticed that the property next door, eighteen, I believe, has an integral garage and has a minimal, uh, amount of front yard landscaping, so that I don't think what is being proposed is inconsistent with what else is happening on the street. Um, I think the green roof on the, uh, on the ancillary building is a, a great idea. I don't see any negative, um, implications to this application and I would like to move approval of it without any condition.
Do we have a second there? Peter, thank you. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At number eight, three forty-nine Indian Grove. The purpose of this application is to alter the exist, the two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear three-story addition and a new rear deck. And with this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, correspondence from planning and transportation and seventeen signature petition and a three signature petition in support and opposition from three thirty, three fifty-one and three fifty-three Indian Grove. Miss Fong, please.
Hello. Hi, I'm Vanessa Fong, architect and agent for the owner.
Yes, could you please tell us about this?
Yes, of course. Um, so we have here an application, uh, for eight variances, um, due to an addition, a rear addition to an existing semi-detached home. Um, there are a few variances, uh, four of them, which are due to the building's, uh, existing condition. um, none of which are changing, and they are number two and three, which have to do with the front yard landscaping, and the front yard is not, um, being touched at all, or, or the front facade, so that is ma- being maintained as is. Um, variance number seven, uh, which has to do with the parking space, there is no, um, parking on site at the moment, and that, um, will not be changing. And, uh, the fourth existing condition is the side yard setback of zero meters, and, um, it's a semi-detached building, so that, that is an existing condition that will be maintained as well. So, all those are being triggered, um, uh, but are more sort of like technical in nature, I would say. Uh, the, there is a presentation that if that could be referred to, that would be really helpful, because there's a site section there that, um, helps to explain, um, an existing site condition that I want to just note, um, there's an existing slope, I don't know if that, that presentation could be brought up? Thank you. Yes, that, that's one. Um, so this is just a supplementary diagram, uh, of, of the site section, and you'll note at the rear, you know, the, the slope is quite high, and it falls down throughout the length of the site to be, um, quite low on Indian Grove, and it actually, um, goes beyond, uh, the left-hand side down another five feet. Uh, and what this actually kind of translates to is that the established grade that, of how we calculate it is quite a bit lower, um, than normal. So, you'll see the established grade is closer to the basement level than it is the ground floor level, and so, this, this ultimately creates a condition that causes variances to be a little bit more inflated than normal. Um, so, for example, the floor space index, we are asking for one point oh two, but that's because the basement level, because the established grade is so low, the basement level is actually being counted as part of the FSI. So, um, which is not, um, typical, uh, and so if we were to take out that basement, um, floor area, the FSI would actually be point eight, which is very much in line with the neighborhood, um, and, and, and the surrounding context. Um, so, the height of the rear side main walls and, and also the building height, we are asking for ten point three seven meters. Um, and again, the, the low kind of established grade that we have on this site, um, contributes to, contributes to this. Um, you'll, you'll note that the established grade is actually, um, where we start measuring the height of the building, and the height of the main walls is below grade. And so the actual, um, exposed building face is closer to nine meters, nine point one six meters, rather than the ten point three seven. Um, all this to say that, um, in this, in this neighborhood, ten meters is allowable in terms of, uh, building height. And if we go to the next slide, please. Um, here you'll note that, uh, the addition, the addition is all at the rear of the house, and so, um, the photo on the left-hand side is the existing addition, and then on the right-hand side is the visual, visualization with the rear addition. And you'll note it's a very, very kind of minor, um, impact on the streetscape by setting the, the addition all at the rear. Um, and so when we were designing this, we were looking at the impact on the street, because we do note that there's a very, um, consistent rhythm on the street of these sort of like two-story dwellings that are raised up on the ground. Um, and then if we go to the next slide, um, there are other examples, um, close to the subject site, of other buildings that have, um, received approval for, uh, the si- similar building height or if not more. And there's actually one on here that hasn't been noted, because it was recently approved, two eighty-seven Indian Grove, which is, uh, just south of our subject site, which got, um, recently approved for ten point five meters. Um, and if we go to the next slide, uh, these are just some photos of those examples on the street, so you can see the size and the scale, um, of these, of these precedents, uh, are sort of in line with, with what we are asking. And then the last variance we are asking for is building depth, uh, ten, uh, seventeen point one meters, which is point one over the asking. Um, the homeowners did, uh, go and speak to as many neighbors as possible, and, and garnered, as, as you noted, Chair, um, over seventeen, uh, signatures of support. Um, and we do think that this, uh, application is respecting the, the neighborhood character by setting the addition to the rear, and this does more to protect the street context more than anything. And, uh, we think that the variances are minor in nature, and, um, we're maintaining the intent of the bylaw. I'm happy to answer any of the further questions as well.
Panel, do you have any questions? Okay, let's move on to Mr. Singh.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, thank you very much for your time this morning. Uh, we are the owners of the home directly north of the property at three fifty-one Indian Grove. Uh, we've owned the property for almost ten years now. And this, uh, this proposal by our neighbors is a little concerning for us, due to the nature of the building being, uh, a three-story addition to the rear of the house, which has a direct impact on our backyard. Uh, we believe that this is not in characteristic with the neighborhood, um, the, and then I did file a letter with the, um, with the committee, and if we could maybe take a quick look at that, I would like to point out that any of the adjustments that have been made and even referred to earlier by the architect here, the properties have been, when they have been a third story addition put on, they have been on the existing building. There has not been a bump out plus a third story going to the rear of the building. Uh, the first one, three fifty-one, which is directly in front of our homes, both homes, and if you can see, there's a laneway as well in between, so there is no concern so much of a potential shadow or impact on the neighboring properties. But the rear shot clearly showed that when the, when the third story was put on, it did not go past the existing property right next to it, the north of the property. Uh, then again, this property is directly in front of us. The other reference was made to two buildings that were fairly new builds at two seventy-two and two, and two seventy, and again, this is referred to by the architect as recent three-story, uh, three, three-story buildings put in, in the area. These properties were three-story on the front side, with no impact on, on the backside to the neighboring properties. As you can see from two seventy-two and two seventy, both of them brought down to avoid putting any shadow down onto the neighboring properties or having a towering building from somebody's backyard view. Two twenty-nine was also referred to in the, in the original letter, when we went to go by and see this property, speak to the neighbors, they had also advised us that, yes, it is a three-story, but it does not go past the property line that we have. We also have a sloped roof on two twenty-nine, which was the characteristics of the neighborhood as well. Um, so it's kinda, it's kinda saying that, yes, three stories are available, but they have been either new built, or they've been on the front of the building, this would be the first one that's coming to the back, not in characteristic with any of the neighboring, uh, side of the street. Uh, we are on the east side of the street, and going from, from the three thirty to three seventy-five, there is no rear third-story building that is actually, uh, on the back of the building. We have no concern with the bump out of going two stories, which other neighbors have done, but this part here has an impact on us for that, of concerns as well. We did see the applicant did put in a shadow study on May nineteenth, uh, or sorry, May seventeenth, and that was the day that we filed the letter, and the shadow study does show that we will be impacted as the direct neighbor. I did say in our letter, I do ask you to take our property into consideration, as we are the direct impacted property. And as the letter was filed on the seventeenth, our two direct north neighbors, or one direct north neighbor, also extended their consent on the letter that was signed. Any of the properties that were canvassed, were canvassed on the north side, or on the, on, they were canvassed on the west side and south side of our property. They did not go to the direct neighbor being three fifty-one, three forty, three fifty-three, three fifty-five, and three fifty-seven. They did approach three fifty-three, and three fifty-three did file a letter after seeing the shadow study, um, and actually be more detailed planning. Um, I'll let them speak to that if they wish to do so. As the direct property to this, I was not notified about this until the letter was sent in, and when we did get the letter, we did see the neighbors, and they said that this is what we were going to be doing, so there was no impact put to us. Same contact information, same discussions, we decided to go around all of us there. For that reason, I say, I think that the, that we have not met the, 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 the foretend that should be passed for the Planning Act. Um, there wasn't any consideration put into just this being the three stories for the rear. This is not in characteristic with the neighborhood, a shadow impact to the neighbor, and really no consideration of what this is in terms of we would have in the spring, fall, and summer, based on their own case study from the shadow study provided. So I don't think it's a direct comparison to the other properties that we're making reference to, I mean, third story in the rear. And your city planner had said that to me in January, and also said that again in their letter, that there's been no approval of a rear height of this side. And lastly, I'd like to say as well that, um, this candidacy started in February, we had no direct impact. We were, we were never approached on it. That's what I'd like to say, but then, and I'm concerned that this will have the impact, but, uh, have a concern for us in the future as well. Thank you.
Mr. Singh, just one question, are you attached to, uh, this property?
No, sir, we're not, there is a very narrow laneway between us, um, though we're close to, I think it's about a meter apart, two meters apart between our properties, we are semi-detached north of them.
Thank you. Panel, any questions?
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back to Ms. Fong.
Hi, um, so to address some of Mr. Singh's concerns, um, the, the homeowners did go out and canvass the neighborhood, there was no, I guess, um, strategy, as Mr. Singh has insinuated, on who they, who they, uh, went to talk to. They went to talk to as many people as possible up and down the street. Um, some homeowners were home, some owners weren't, and I do believe that they spoke to Mr. Singh, um, on May second, the weekend of May second, um, and, and they were only able to talk to him then, because he doesn't live in the house, um, and, and it's actually tenanted, so that was just the day that he was around. And, um, the homeowner left him with the, with his cell phone number, um, asked him if he wanted to talk, and Mr. Singh said he didn't want to talk at the time, so there was, um, an attempt to reach out to him directly, um, and there was no sort of, I guess, conversation after that for Mr. Singh, um, except for the, the letter, which, um, was represented. Uh, in terms of, just like, I just wanted to, I guess, make note of that, uh, rendered, uh, in the letter of figure number six, I think it was, um, misconstrued in terms of how large that rear addition is, um, we, it looked like in that rendering, um, it was over one story from the neighboring building, detached neighbor, but it's actually only going to be five feet taller than the neighboring building. So, I just wanted to point that out, um, we are, we are, you know, respectfully, we had many conversations with, with the planner. Um, we ourselves as a designer, you know, really struggled with, um, I guess, putting the addition at the front as Mr. Singh has, um, I guess, recommended, and we felt that the street context was, was, um, there's, there's a very, very strong street context that, that we did not want to ruin, and putting the addition at the front would do that. Um, and so putting the addition at the back was sort of, um, more appropriate in our mind, we do recognize that as you add mass, there is a shadow impact, but I think the, the delta between what is allowed and, and what, uh, I guess, further impact we are asking for with these minor variances is quite minimal. I think I addressed all his points, but if there's anything else, I'm happy to, to address it.
Could you address the, the, uh, the, uh, planning said that, uh, this is out of, out of character with the neighborhood? I, I, I understand that you pointed out other three-story dwellings, Mr. Singh also talked about no three-story dwellings out the, no three-story additions out the back rather than the front, I understand your position is that you didn't want to, uh, disrupt the character of the neighborhood by changing the front.
Yes.
Uh, could you address changing the rear?
Um, yeah, I, I guess, um, uh, you know, three stories is allowed in this, in this neighborhood, um, so there, we aren't asking for a variance for the number of stories, um, it is, I guess, the height that is the concern here, and, you know, allowable is ten meters, we are asking for ten point three seven. And I think that, um, there is precedent in the neighborhood with other, other properties, um, of that height, if not more. Um, and I, I actually think that this proposal, um, is, is less of an impact than, than some of those other precedents where, where it's a kind of like full three-story, three stories in height. I, I completely recognize that is an addition to the rear, but, um, as noted, we felt that that was more appropriate for the street context and for the character of the street than, than addition at the front.
All right, thank you, panel, any further questions? All right, thank you, uh, so, do we have any comments, or do we have a motion? Yes, Nimrod?
I'll provide some comments, um, I, I do have concerns with the, uh, the three-story rear addition. I think it does have negative impacts to the neighbor on the abutting lot. Uh, this addition will extend far behind the adjacent house, and in effect will create like a three-story wall, um, to the neighbor, and so those are, those are my concerns.
Um, I'd like to add mine, uh, I'm, I'm thinking of the, um, that's, it's like a compromise, and I think that the designer, the architect have chosen to, uh, keep the street, um, rhythm and the massing untouched. I think that is, uh, a, a very good, in, this is a matter of choice. I prefer the choice, and I think that in really, uh, there are a lot of, uh, similar additions that in my neighborhood that, uh, were nice of toy in front, and then they just put in, uh, similar kind of addition at the back, and it's tucked in at the back. It's almost that, I think the presentation for the, from the opposition is a little bit misleading, because you never actually get that vintage point. I, I think that when you're drawing something like that, uh, thinking that you can just stand right in front of that addition, it look is exaggerated, but I think that this one is where, a lot of thought is put in it, so that it does not want to destroy the fabric of the neighborhood in terms of the sk- uh, the street skin. And then I'm in favor of it, and I, I think, um, uh, with, with the, the slope of the site, it seems to be a three-story, but they're only asking for one foot was allowable height, and, and that's, that's my technique.
Any further comments? Yes, Carl?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with Nimrod, I have some concerns with the, uh, the size, bulk, and height of the rear addition. Um, I do, I've done a lot of thinking about this one, and to me, the issue is the third floor of the rear addition, um, which in fact, if you look at the plans, half of the floor area is basically a two-story space. It isn't actually necessary that the rear addition be quite as high as it is, so I, I have, I am inclined to agree with the planning department and with my colleague, colleague Nimrod, that, um, as presented, the rear addition is a bit intrusive to neighbors on either side. I do respect the, um, the concern with the streetscape, and I think it's welcome that, uh, it really, the addition will not be seen from the front, but I do think that the implications to the neighbors at the back is, is unfortunate, and, um, I will not be supporting the application in its current form. The third floor of the rear addition, to me, is a huge problem.
Peter, do you have any comments?
Sure, I mean, I have nothing new to add, except that I'm, I'm more in the, in the mind of Nimrod and Carl here. I think protecting the streetscape is important, but I would have preferred to have seen some of the bulk, um, up in the front, or just do a third story, um, over the existing house, but I think it's too intrusive to the, uh, to the adjacent neighbors in the back in this current form.
Okay, do we have a motion? Yes, Nimrod?
Um, I'll move refusal of the request of variances.
All right, do we have a second there, Carl? All right, all in favor of the motion? Your application is refused. Yim, you're dissenting? Yes?
Yes. I object to that.
Number nine, twenty-seven Rosedale Road, purpose of this application is to alter the two-and-a-half-story detached house by constructing a rear first-floor deck. And with this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. Uh, email correspondence from Heritage and, uh, Urban Forestry, uh, rele- Email correspondence from Heritage and Urban Forestry, Reline and Natural Feature Protection, a report from Conservation Authority and Heritage Preservation, and support from 30 Avondale Road. Mr. Cheeseman? Mr. Cheeseman, are you with us?
Hi, Mr. Cheeseman. If you have muted yourself on your end, you can unmute yourself so we can hear you.
I can hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Chairman and many members. We are to apply for minor variance for a rear first-floor.
All right, could you, sir, could you, Mr.?
27 Rosedale Road in Toronto.
All right, Mr. Cheeseman.
My name is Patrick Cheeseman. My municipal address is Nine Merton Road, Trenton, Ontario. I am an agent for the owners of 27 Rosedale Road in Toronto. As I mentioned earlier, we are to request a minor variance to construct a rear deck at the first floor of the existing dwelling of the house at 27 Rosedale Avenue. We're asking for two variances. The first variance is dealing with the building length of 17 meters, and the existing dwelling length is 32 meters. The maximum permitted depth of the dwelling unit is 19 meters, and the existing detached dwelling unit is 56.6 meters in depth. We read over the recommendations by staff, and we feel that variance is minor and that it is in general in accordance with the original city plan.
All right, panel, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeseman. Panel, do you have any comments? Or do we have a motion? Yes, Carl.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a very straightforward application. Unless my colleagues have any concerns, I don't have any concerns with it. It appears that the two variances are existing conditions. The adjacent neighbor is in favor of the application, and it only really affects the deck. I'd like to bring forward a motion of approval subject to the standard heritage condition.
All right, do we have a seconder? Peter, thank you. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number 10, 105 Marlowe Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by converting the one-story enclosed front porch into usable interior floor space. With this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, a report from planning, and support from 97 Marlowe. Mr. Hodgkinson? Mr. Hodgkinson, are you there?
If you have muted yourself, please try to unmute yourself. Hi, if the speaker can turn up his or her microphone volume so we can hear you. Try that. If not, we will try to call you at your provided number.
Hello?
Okay. Through you, Mr. Chairman, we're going to try to call the applicant at the provided number.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Hodgkinson. We are trying to call you at your provided number if you can pick up.
I think we should move on. We'll come back to this later. Next application is number 11, 28 Fenwick Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition, a third-story addition, and constructing a rear detached garage. With this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant and correspondence from planning. Mr. Schink, are you here?
Hello?
Mr. Schink?
Yes, hello.
Yes.
My name is Greg Wapshink. I live at 128 Leslie Street in Toronto, Ontario, and I am the owner of 28 Fenwick.
All right.
My wife and I are just making this application due to expand the size of the home for ourselves and our children. I think it's pretty, I don't know if you need me to go into any details. I can.
Yeah, could you tell us what conditions are existing?
Sorry, in terms of conditions, what do you mean?
Well, is the height of the rear exterior wall, well, that says will be, well, I don't know. They're constructing a rear, okay, so side lot lines, et cetera, are they existing?
The only change is that we are making is we are expanding the size of the side walls to meet the actual height of the building. And this falls in line with a very similar renovation that's happening at 1A Fenwick, which is just down the street. It's currently underway. And then we are adding a garage, and we are removing the current hard landscaping in the backyard and making it soft landscaping. We did work with the examiner, the city examiner, on this issue, and we met the conditions to change the plans according to their request.
Okay, panel, do you have any, Yim?
Yes, I only have one question. I'd like to clarify, on your drawing A Street, I believe it is the site plan, yeah, A Street, no, the one-floor plan?
Yeah.
Yes, and the front, you have a note saying that you will be expanding, extend the front porch.
Yes.
Right? That does not appear in the purpose clause because in the purpose clause, it's only all the construction is taking place at the back. So you are changing the front.
Yes, we are.
Is it going to cover, is it going to cover the whole, the new extended porch?
Sorry, what is your question?
The extended, the porch is going to be extended, right, enlarged. Is it going to be covered? You put another column, and then the cover will be extended, the full length of the house, right?
Yes, yes. So the purpose was to cover, sorry, the extension of the porch, yes.
Yeah, because that's missing from the purpose clause. That's why I want to make sure that is what you're doing.
Sorry, that must have been an issue with the drawings made by my architect.
Yeah, but that doesn't require any kind of variances, right? It will not trigger, it will not.
No, I do not believe it does.
Okay, thank you.
All right, but is it a new porch or an extension of an old porch?
It is an extension of an old porch.
So I believe it should be, as Yim says, should be in the purpose because it's not in there.
That's not a major issue for us. We can just remove that if need be.
No, well, it's not necessary to remove it. It's just we want to get our paperwork correct.
Okay, my apologies for that, Mr. Chair.
All right, not your fault.
I have a question on that front porch extension. Is that going to trigger a front yard setback variance, or is that even not?
No, sir, because it's in line with the current porch.
Okay, any other questions? Or do we have any comments or a motion? Yes, Yim?
I need to make a motion for approval with the amendment to say that in the purpose clause, it's also extended, extend the existing porch as indicated on the plan.
Okay.
That is the amendment I'd like to make for that.
All right.
And I was, because there aren't any objections from the neighbors, and I think that a lot of the variances are existing conditions, and then I'm in support of it.
Do we have any, a seconder? Carl, thank you. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Take care.
Number 12, 2455 Queen Street East.
Hello?
Just a minute. The purpose of this application is to convert the existing two-story mixed-use building containing retail uses on the ground floor and one dwelling unit at the second story into a three-story mixed-use building containing retail uses on the ground floor and two dwelling units on the second and third stories by constructing a rear second-story addition with a rear balcony, a third-story, full third-story addition with a rear balcony and a rear staircase providing access to the second and third stories. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant only. Mr. Walker?
Yes?
Yes. Would you give us your name and address for the record? I don't believe we're going to need a presentation from you.
It's Christopher Walker. I'm the architect and agent. My address is 87 Brickworks Lane in Toronto.
Okay, do you have anything to tell us short of making the presentation before I take it to the committee?
No, the variance is for one additional parking spot, which we simply don't have access to on the lot.
Thank you, panel. Do we have any comments or questions? Carl?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval without conditions. I think this is a very, it looks like a very complicated application, but the variance is a very minor one. It's a reduction of a parking space where in fact, there is no space to accommodate it. I don't believe that there is a negative impact. I was concerned initially with the staircase and the overlook, but it doesn't appear that that's a problem with adjacent properties. So I'm pleased to move approval without condition.
Do we have a seconder? Peter, thank you. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, have a great day.
Number 13, 4 Fernival Road. And the purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a front porch and front one-story addition. With this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, a report from Urban Forestry, and support from five or six addresses on Fernival and one from Topham Road. Mr. Olivera?
Hi, yes, I'm here. My name is Mike Olivera. I'm with Replacing Design located at 911 Devoncourt Road, and I'm here representing 4 Fernival Road.
Yeah, Mr. Panel, do you need a presentation on this application?
No.
All right, no, we, thank you, Mr. Olivera. Unless you have something to say to the panel, we can proceed to deal with a motion.
Unless the panel has any questions?
Okay, Yim.
Yeah, I'd like to move for approval because I think, I believe all the three variances are minor, and they do have support from the neighbors. And I will impose Forestry Condition Number Two for approval.
All right, do we have a seconder? Carl? Is seconded, Carl?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
All right, number 14, 89 Mayfield Avenue. And the purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story dwelling unit by constructing a second-story retail addition, a second-story rear addition, pardon me. And before us, we have materials submitted by the applicant, two form letters in support, and correspondence and concern or interest from 16 Verbena Avenue.
Hello, Mr. Chair. My name's Toivo Bahi.
Yes.
I have 17 product trail markers. I'm representing the homeowner as the agent.
Yeah, it doesn't look like we need a presentation from you, panel. Does anyone need a presentation? Carl?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. The, as I understand it, the variance is, I have to just check for a second, has to do with parking, one of them. It says there's no, zero parking is provided. Am I correct that notwithstanding that clause, there is in fact parking provided in the front yard?
That's correct. The existing parking is available in the front yard. There's no change proposed to the front yard. Everything is just a second-story addition on the existing footprint. But the reason why.
Does the park?
Sorry, go ahead.
Is the parking in the front yard currently legal? Do you need an approval for it? Is it currently legal?
I assume it's currently legal because I guess transportation and planning did not make any comments on it.
Okay, so then I don't understand why there's a need for variance number four. Maybe I'm overlooking something.
It's because of, there's a rear car, a rear yard garage existing which has been used, and we're proposing a stair which projects into the side yard, which will then obviously limit the access by a vehicle to the rear yard garage. So.
So you would lose that parking, but if the parking in the front yard is authorized and legal, then it would count. My, I guess it's a question for the Deputy Secretary Treasurer. Is the variance necessary? Or do we, I don't have difficulty with what you're trying to do, but do we need to approve the front yard parking? I'm a little concerned with variance number four.
This application was reviewed through a zoning review by the zoning examiner. So this was picked up by the zoning examiner. Let me just double-check the file.
Is it on the boulevard? It's on the city? So that it's not?
No, I think it's in, Mr. Chairman, I think it's in the front yard, right, on their own property. I don't think it is on the boulevard.
That is correct. Currently, there's ample room there for a single car on their own property. That is correct, uh, currently there's ample room there for a single car, on their own property.
So, I, I agree, I don't know why the variance is necessary.
The only reason I raise it is if it turns out after the meeting's over, that in fact that parking space in the front isn't legal, then the variance is necessary, but I, if we could clarify it now, it will save you headaches later on.
That would be fantastic, if, uh, if, if you wanna make it legal or deem it legal, then, uh, I'm all for that. It has been existing for a number of years.
Okay. Excuse me, can I add a, uh, 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 just my comment, my take, is, uh, that, uh, is, this application has gone through a C S S T, means that they have a zoning certificate, and what has been provided to us is actually gone through a zoning review, and if they have, uh, documents showing that it's legal, they probably will not have that variance, but probably they are already gone through this exercise, and I, I, I sort of lean towards, uh, uh, trusting the certificates, uh, funding and, uh, and, uh, judge as it is, yeah.
So the zoning notice, as I believe the agent made some reference to, is, um, that parking access has been obstructed by the stairs at the, uh, rear east side. The zoning examiner makes no comment with regards to any parking space in the front yard. I mean, you have an existing driveway that goes to the garage in the rear yard, but it doesn't seem to be noted by the zoning examiner that there is a parking space in the front yard, and hence the variance for zero parking.
So it's possible that he missed the front yard parking? We don't know.
There's an existing garage, so one would presume that one parks in the garage in the rear yard.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there any possibility that down the road, that the, if the variance is granted and zero parking is required, then there's no problem, can he continue to park there?
Well, just looking at the site plan, um, looks like part of the parking space would have the porch in, included in that space, it looked, it would look like a parking space, or a car would be parking partially on the Boulevard and partially on, um, private property. So I, I don't know how transportation would view that.
Well, I, as, if I could just, uh, interject, uh, um, as far as, uh, I know, the homeowners do park, uh, and it's based, I wish I had a picture, I didn't realize this would be an issue. Um, but they do park, uh, on the driveway, and, uh, the front of the car is basically, uh, near uh, the front edge of the building, so there is ample room for a, a parking, uh, space there on their own property.
Yeah, but I, I, I've seen applications where parking on the driveway leading to a garage is, is not considered a parking space. So it may be that they don't consider that a parking space.
So I, as, as I, uh, stated before, the zoning, uh, I did question this, uh, when the, when it did come up in regards to zoning, and it was triggered as a result of the staircase in the driveway access. Um, they didn't have any issues, other than that, that it did trigger the zero parking space, um, item.
So Mister Chairman, it sounds as though the, the, on the, to be safe, variance number four should stay. I, I, I would caution the applicant to just follow up a little further with the city to make sure that the space that is currently in use, um, is, is legal, to make sure that, that he doesn't have to come back here and get another variance, but, um, I, I can, I can understand why it is the way it is based on the, uh, on the explanations we received. So I think we should proceed with the fourth variance, but the applicant might be well advised to just check further with the city.
Did you wanna make a motion to that effect, Carl?
Uh, yeah, Mister Chairman, I would like to, um, move a motion of approval of the application without conditions. Um, I, I, my suggestion to the applicant, I don't think needs to go in the motion, but I, were I him, I would check with the city about the use of the front yard parking.
Do we have a seconder?
Very good, we will do that.
Nimrod, thank you. Uh, all in favor? Have your approval, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chair, committee members.
All right, number fifteen?
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Uh, we have reached John Hodgson, it, it appears he is on the line, so we can try again if you want.
Which number is that? Okay, we're going back to number ten. One oh five Marlowe Avenue. And the purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by converting the one-story enclosed front porch into usable interior floor space. And with this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, a report from planning, and, uh, su- support from ninety-seven Marlowe Avenue. Number ten, Mister Hodgson.
Yes, I hope you can hear me now.
Yes, were, were you on the line and you couldn't be heard?
That's correct, I think I had a failure in my own cellphone, I had listened to the meeting from the beginning, and then when it became time to speak, I wasn't able to be heard, and it was somewhat frustrating, thank you for calling back.
I'll bet, all right, thank you, sir, um.
So.
So.
My name is John Hodgson, I am the agent for the owners at one oh five Marlowe. I live at one zero three Westmount Avenue in Toronto.
All right, let me just check with the panel, panel, do we need a presentation on this one? I see lots of head wagons, no, so, uh, unless you have something to, that you wanna impart to the, uh, committee, we'll go into committee and deal with this matter.
No, I have a question, Mister Chairman?
Yes, Yim, go ahead.
Oh, oh, just, I, I, actually, I have no, no, no problem with the application because I think there are a lot of enclosed, enclosed, um, uh, front porches on the street, but one question, uh, am I wrong that this is already been built?
Um, the, in, um, city permit in nineteen eighty-three, uh, the enclosure of the front porch was permitted, and then, uh, the owners who bought the house, bought the house where the in the, inside doors and windows were still in place, but the porch was enclosed, uh, pretty much as you saw it in some of the photographs I forwarded. And therefore, um, it, what they're really trying to do is, uh, have the space joined into the house. Uh, and one of the issues the city brought up was the seventy-five percent soft, um, um, front landscape, and again, as previously presented in another application, the existing conditions, uh, did not achieve that, um, that seventy-five percent even now, so there's really no change to the circumstances, the amount of, um, hard surface. Much of the hard surface in front of this house is in the form of paper sunk into the earth, so that really, it's not like, uh, solid wood or solid cement.
Okay, I, I thought it was a, a simple question, but you, you sort of complicated it a little bit. Uh, when it was built, it was built as an unheated, just like, uh, entrance vestibule, and now you need these variances because you want to include it into the house. That, doesn't that in, increase your F S I?
Um, I checked the numbers for the F S I, and they were still within the limits, uh, permitted for the site. We have lots of backyard space.
Oh, okay.
Uh, okay.
Okay, understand, okay, that, that clarified, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, panel, any further questions or comments or a motion, Carl?
Mister Chairman, I don't think that there's any difficulty with it, or I don't have any difficulty with this application. It's consistent with neighbors on either side which have porches in above the same location. Uh, I think it's very straightforward, or rather minor, the variance that's requested is, is minor as well. I'd like to bring forward a motion of approval, subject to the, uh, condition, uh, requested by planning, that the front yard setback variance apply only to the front porch enclosure, and that the enclosed front porch be limited to one-story in height.
Do we have a seconder, yes, Peter, all in favor? Have your approval, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Yim, Yim? Did you vote in favor? I think she must have fallen asleep.
Oh, I, no, I thought, I did very quickly, I thought you saw me, sorry, yeah, reading.
All right, number fifteen, eighteen Chesley. Peter, you're, uh, recusing yourself, thank you. Uh, the purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a two-story rear addition and interior alterations to accommodate two secondary suites. Uh, and we have before us in this application, material submitted by the applicant, uh. Okay, Mister Ali Fed Hill?
Hello, Mister Chairman, good morning.
Good morning.
Board members. I'm the applicant, uh, I'm the agent for the applicant. Um, my name is Ali Fadil, and I reside at twenty-one Taylor Street. And, uh, what we have here is an application to, uh, for the single, um, family residence to convert it into, uh, three separate units. And we're also proposing to have, uh, the basement entrance in the front of the house, pending, uh, approval from the Committee of Adjustment, uh, and also approval from transportation, uh, authorities, which we have been in contact with. And, uh, from what I understand and from our communications with them, they had mentioned that, uh, they do approve such thing, and there has been set precedence in regards to that matter. Uh, it was just a matter of getting this, uh, variance approved.
Okay. Panel, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, any comments, or do we have a motion? Yes, Nimrod?
Yeah, I, I do have concerns with the proposal, um, I think what the applicant indicated is that they're proposing to create three, three dwelling units in this building, and so I don't see this any longer as a, um, a primary dwelling unit with a secondary suite, but rather the secondary suites become the primary main use.
I mean, the, the owner of the property will be living in it, this is just to offset the cost of living in Toronto. So he just needed some help with basically providing additional income and also additional rental units for the city of Toronto.
So variance number four, um, you're proposing that the secondary suites account for sixty-six percent of the interior floor area, as opposed to the zoning limiting it to forty-five percent, so how do you consider variance four as minor?
I mean, there was already a lot of set precedence, uh, in regards to that variance. Um, I mean, I'm not sure if you, uh, it might have been my mistake to call it a minor, but, uh, this is the best way that we can work it out in terms of layout and, uh, the comfort for all residents within the dwelling unit.
So, Carl, do you have a question?
Um, well, I, I, perhaps just to indicate, I, I share Nimrod's concern, I, uh, I, I wonder if this isn't in fact increasing the density of this project beyond what is reasonable, the, I, I have a lot of trouble with variance number four, um, as I gather Nimrod may as well, and I, um, I don't see anything that would dissuade me from, from, uh, voting against the application because of that.
I mean, I mean, number four was already granted for, um, multiple addresses actually, and they were all done recently in the last, uh, few years, actually, and the last one was, uh, so that we have, uh, three twenty-three Brock Avenue, four forty-nine A Brock Avenue, and four seventy-five Brock Avenue as well, and they're all in regards to very similar, uh, actually, it's, it's the same variance that we're applying for.
Where is Brock Avenue relative to Chelsea Street?
Literally off of, Chelsea's off of Brock. But you have to go Brock to get to Chelsea Street, uh, sorry.
The other question I have is, um, you're, you're requesting a front basement walkout. Where are there additional, where are there other front basement walkouts on this particular street? The, the Google maps are, are difficult to read, and I unfortunately didn't get a chance to see this one in the, in the field.
Uh, can you just remind me what, uh, what number of variance that was? Uh, this was number six, are you pertaining to?
Oh, three.
Uh, three, sorry. So, not so much on Chesley, cause Chesley is like, um, it's a very small street off of Brock Avenue, so there isn't too many homes to begin with on that particular street. But Brock Avenue is a wider, larger street with multiple homes on it, and there's also set precedence in regards to that, uh, variance, which was three twenty-three Brock Avenue and four oh seven Brock Avenue, that were both approved by, uh, the Committee of Adjustment.
Yeah, so.
And this is all within the five hundred meter radius, within the prop, within our property.
I, I, I want.
And, and the addresses that I mentioned are actually a lot closer, they're like literally a two-minute walk from where we are.
I, I wanted to just, just, uh, comment on, uh, variance number four, where the secondary suites can, will be comprising sixty-six percent, uh, rather than being less than forty-five percent. We've had, uh, I, I, I don't know Nimrod and Carl whether you've seen this variance before, uh, but I had a run of these where, and, and some of them were substantially more than sixty-six percent, and it seems to me with the city encouraging, uh, dwelling units, et cetera, that this bylaw, this section of the bylaw may be a little out of date. Uh, and, and we had approved them as the applicant suggests, that, that there are, uh, lots that we actually approved. So, I, I, and, and so having regard to the city ass- asking or encouraging more dwelling units, uh, it seems to me that, that this, this bylaw might be something to be looked at and revised, but in the meantime, I, I don't consider it something that would, uh, be a deal breaker.
Um, uh, Mister. Mister Chairman, I'd like to echo, I, I'd like to echo what you just said, because in my, in our past experience, we have been approving, uh, actually multiple secondary suites, um, and, and in this case, variance four is asking for nineteen percent more than the forty-five. And I think that, um, just, uh, to, uh, have affordable units in the city, it is what the, uh, the, the, the planning department, uh, has encour, has encouraged. And, and that's, uh, also note that there's no comment, negative comment from the planning department on this. And I'm more in agreement with Mister Chairman's comment on this variance.
And Nimrod, did you wanna add something?
Sure, are we in committee, are we in committee now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, um, I've seen this variance, uh, many times, and, and I've seen that the, the number, the figure range significantly. the figure range significantly. And I, I think this is not a very old regulation. It's only a few years old. And so, you know, if we think it's outdated, then perhaps it should be reviewed. But it's, it is only a few years old. And I don't, I think the intent of this regulation was that the main use remained the primary use of, of the building. And I think once the, the main dwelling unit is no longer the primary use, it becomes a multi-unit building. And there's nothing wrong with that except that this regulation, it, it does not meet the intent of this particular zoning regulation. And perhaps it should be looked at through a different process, but not through the Committee of Adjustment variance process.
All right. Does someone want to make? Any further comments? Or someone want to make a motion?
Yep, so I'll throw the motion to, to refuse the, the request to variance.
Do we have a seconder? Carl? All in favor of the motion, motion to refuse? Okay. All opposed? Yim? I can't vote. Okay. Motion, your application's refused, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. As, as I'm required to. Can we get Peter? How do we get Peter back? Can you tell him that it's over?
Can you telephone him?
Oh, I'm here.
There he is, there he is.
Oh, great.
Okay. Application number sixteen, eleven forty-one Dufferin Street. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing two secondary suites and converting the rear detached garage into an ancillary building. And with this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, correspondence from Transportation, support from eleven forty-three and eleven ten Dufferin Street, and opposition, well, actually, we had a correspondence and support from eleven forty-three, which they've now withdrawn. And they're in opposition. So... Mister Tijang? Mister Tijang here?
Mister Tijang, can you hear us? Can you hear us? Mister Tijang, if you can refrain from unmuting and muting yourself, we will unmute you on our side. Can you hear us? Hi, Mister Tijang, we're going to call you at your provided number.
Do you want to move on or you want to stay? You want to try first? So... All right, so give him a call. If we can't reach him, we'll go on to the next one and come back.
Line.
Hello? Mister Tijang?
Can you hear us, Mister Tijang? Through you, Mister Chair, we're still experiencing difficulties reaching the applicant. Do you want to?
Okay. Let's, let's move on to the next one. Number seventeen, ten twenty-six Shaw Street. And the purpose of this application is to convert the existing one-unit townhouse into a two-unit townhouse by constructing a partial third-story addition, a rear second-floor balcony and a front third-floor balcony. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant and support from six Hallam Street. Mister Letke?
Yes, hello. My name is Aaron Letke. My wife and I are the owners of the property. My wife being Angela at Cementis. She's, she's the owner on title. We also reside in and own the property directly to the north, which is ten twenty-eight Shaw Street. So we, we had an opportunity to purchase this property. It was fairly derelict and had a number of war quarters. So we're restoring and improving and hopefully increasing the size of it as well. Now, I, I submitted a letter just explaining some of our rationale for some of the moves that we're making. And I wonder, is this something? There are really just a couple of points that I made in this. And is this something that I should recap to the committee?
Yeah, I, I, I think you should, particularly the one point nine oh floor space index.
Right, yeah. Because I do realize that that's, that's an unusual number. And it's something that I discussed a little bit in the letter. So, so the two variances, just to recap, the, the first one is the, is the, the first one is the height variance pertaining to the opposing walls. And maybe, maybe I'll get back to that. The, the, I think that the, the variance of more concern is, as you mentioned, the, the FSI, which is one point nine. And what I've explained, there's a map, I believe it's on page five. There's, yeah, this map, right, sorry. Maybe it's page, actually, sorry, page seventeen, yeah. And if you zoom in on that, what you'll see is that, that the standard kind of urban fabric in this neighborhood is, consists of twenty-foot by one-hundred-foot lots. So they're about two thousand square feet or about a hundred and maybe a hundred and ninety square meters. And this particular corner, the corner of Shaw Street and Yarmouth has been sort of chopped up into five different properties. And that happened quite a long time ago, certainly before, before I owned this property. So the, the, the result of this is a much higher density than what you see, even though the buildings are somewhat contextual in terms of their overall mathing. So we're, we're asking for a hundred and fifty-nine square meters of GFA, which is unusual in the neighborhood. It's a fairly contextual number. The other thing I'd like to point out about the GFA and the FSI is that the building that we own directly to the north, that's ten twenty-eight Shaw Street, we, we, we applied for the same variance with regards to FSI back in two thousand and five and that was granted. And it was granted for the reasons of, you know, similar reasons that despite the fact that the, that the actual floor space index is seen as being a fairly high ratio, it was seen at the time as not being an extraordinarily large building. So that was the discussion that we had back in two thousand and five. And with regards to that, if, if, if you could scroll back up to the first page, I've included a street elevation. And this shows the building on the right is ten twenty-eight. That's where I live. And we live in the upper, the second and third floor. You can see the third-floor addition that we, that we added back in two thousand and five. And then the building directly attached to that to the left is ten twenty-six Shaw Street. So essentially, we're planning to do something that is more or less a mirror image of what we, what we applied for in the past.
Okay. Panel, do you have?
Now, with regards, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. Are you, are you finished? Or do you want, you have another comment or two?
I just wanted to briefly touch on the, the opposing walls. So the, I understand that the intent of the limitation on the opposing walls clause, and that's, that's something that was introduced a few years back. It's, I, I understand that, you know, the intent of that is anything over seven-and-a-half meters. There's a, there's an intent to set, set that back from the street. The prescriptive requirement of that is specifically to slope the roof or create a mansard or a pitched roof. And the intent is so that the, the, you know, if you, if you build up to the full ten height, ten-meter height restriction, then it should be built in a way that doesn't loom over the street. So, you know, it still provides access to light and, light and, and, and views of the sky. So we've set, our, our proposal, similar to the one directly to the north, we're proposing to set the third floor back from Shaw Street so that it would actually fit within the profile of what would otherwise be permitted. So if we were to build a mansard roof, we're actually, we're actually proposing to build something slightly less massive than that. So I hope that although this doesn't technically conform with the bylaw, I hope that it's more or less in the spirit and meeting the intent of the bylaw in that particular clause.
All right. Thank you. Panel, do you have any questions? Yes. Nimrod?
Yeah, so my question is, what is the existing built FSI for that site?
I don't have the exact number, but I think it's about one point two or one point three.
So essentially, the, and I would expect the rest of the buildings on the street are like that, that they already, the existing buildings are already exceeding the zoning FSI regulation?
They certainly are in this little corner, yes. So as I mentioned, there were two lots that were chopped up into five and they are already exceeding the, the FSI. That's right.
And now what is to the left of this? The next lot over looks extremely narrow. Do you, what exactly is that?
That's, that's a very unusual lot. Yeah, it's a good point. It was, it was originally a barber shop a number of years ago. So the current owners bought it. It's, it's about nine feet wide. And they've currently, although it's a single story, that building goes all the way back to the rear property line. So it's about nine feet wide from exterior. I think it must be about seven foot six clear inside. Very, very friendly. We're on very good terms and they've expressed support for this, not in writing, but to me personally.
All right. Panel?
So that, sorry.
Yeah. Panel, do you have any further questions?
No.
Okay. Any comments or do we have a motion? Yes, Peter?
I think, I think we're probably all in agreement. So I'm just going to say my bit and jump in if anyone wants. But I think this is a really good project and I think that the building to the north with the cafe has shown that this, this is a type of typology that fits in well with this neighborhood. It is a kind of urban setting within this neighborhood. And I do appreciate the stepping back of the third floor. The FSI number is high, but that doesn't really bother me. I don't see any kind of negative impacts coming from this additional third story. So if no one has any other comments, I'd be happy to move. Oh.
I do have a comment. Just a suggestion, if it was to be approved, could it be tied to the site plan and elevation drawings? And that ensures that that third floor is, will in fact be set back from the front?
Sure. That makes sense.
I'd just like to add another comment. This is not a usual application and then it can, actually, the, it's quite unusual in the corner and the size is unusual in the proposed. So it is great. I must say that the presentation material is really good to help me understand it and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Do we have a seconder?
Thank you.
Carl?
I'd like to second the motion. I'd also like to echo what Yim just said. The presentation material was first-class. It was very helpful to understand a somewhat complex application. And I think, as Peter had said, the typology is, is incredibly terribly important to this area and appropriate to the area. I, I'm very pleased to second the motion.
All right. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have eleven forty-one? Okay. So let's, let's take a short break and see if we can get a hold of eleven forty-one and come back in about five minutes.
Mister Tijang, can you hear us? Is it, yeah? Hear me? Yeah, yeah. Maybe you can try to turn off, turn up your microphone volume.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, but very, the sound is very low. Hi, if you can turn off any speakers you have in the background. If you can turn off any speakers you have in the background, we are getting some feedback. We do hear you. So if you can just turn up your microphone volume or speak into your mic more clearly. We're going to unmute you now again.
Hello? Can you hear me now better?
Much better, thank you. We're just taking a short break.
Okay, thank you. Pretty much.
Okay. Oh, we got everybody here on speaker. Okay. Next item is number 161141 Dufferin Street. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing two secondary suites and converting the rear detached garage into an ancillary building. With this application, with this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, correspondence from transportation, support from 1110 Dufferin Street, and opposition from 1143 Dufferin Street. Mr. Te Jong?
Hello. Good afternoon, Chairman, Board of Members. I'm sorry we missed the connection before. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Can we have your address, sir?
No, I don't have anything to specifically address. In fact, this is.
No, no, I want, I want your municipal address. Where do you, where do you live, or where do you have your office?
Oh, I'm the owner of 1141 Dufferin Street. I live at 617 Seneca Hill Drive, Toronto.
Okay. Panel, do we need a presentation on this matter? Nimrod?
I do have some questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
So the first question is, in August 2020, you got C of A approval to permit the two secondary suites. So the purpose of this application states that you are also seeking to construct two secondary suites, but there's no variances requested. So should that be deleted from the purpose of this application? And then the second question relates to the existing garage. What exactly is going to happen to that? What are you gonna use it for?
Yes, that is correct, sir. Back last year, we go to the minor variance, and we got the zoning certificate. We had to come back today for the fact, because when we applied for the building permit, the building examiner asked us to have the corridor, the sidewalk corridor, an easement with my neighbor. Since my neighbor doesn't want to make an easement, then we have no choice but to make an ancillary building at the back as an escape route. Basically, this is just the administrative for the building code.
So you mean you can no, you can no longer use it as a garage because you no longer have access?
No, sir. Technically, the building code said that I had to have certain distance from my building to the property line, which is, I'm just short merely two inches. So that's mean, the two inches, I need to have my neighbor permission to have an easement to use that corridor, which is having used for both of us for many, many years, maybe since the beginning of the house built. But the building permit examiner just want to see on paper that the neighbor agreed to have an easement, so we can use the corridor on the side of our building as an escape or walkway to the back.
So Nimrod, did you understand how that applied to your question? I didn't. Nimrod?
So I, I guess I didn't, it wasn't clear to me, though, what will this previously garage, it will, it will not be used as a habitable space? It will just be used for people to walk through, to get out?
Correct. Yeah, it just be used by people to walk through in case they have to escape. Basically, this is actually the, the suggestion or advice from the building permit as alternative of the corridor that we have already, to use ancillary as an escape through the garage.
Nimrod, did you have any further questions? All right, Yim, did you have a question?
No, I just tried to recall what he said, that because the previous decision is based on that they, he can get an easement agreement with the neighbor. Since he did not get it, he has to come back for, for this time. Because then the building department will have treated that he has to provide that exit, or the safety exit.
Correct. Correct.
Just trying to explain what I understood.
Thank you.
Carl, did you have a question?
Can I clarify? The, the ancillary building was originally used as a garage, am I correct?
That is correct, sir.
And get access to the garage was by a, a combined driveway with your neighbor?
No, there, there is a laneway at the back.
Okay, it was, now, if, I, I still don't understand. You need to be able to walk through it, but you could still walk through it if it was a garage, could you not?
That's correct, sir.
So back to the very first question that Mr. Solomon asked you. What's the use of the building? What, what's going to happen? What's going to be in the building? Is it being used as a garage?
Basically, we still just don't do any alteration at all. We just want to make sure that there is a door that can be used when people need to escape or exit from the building, instead of using the corridor, which is practically just what we did for many, many years. Just because of the formality that the building examiner, building permit examiner, want to see that there is indeed an easement. Because the building examiner told me, in the future, if your neighbor built a fence within your house, then you don't have enough space between the property line and the building. So we are obligated to have, make sure that you have another alternative exit.
I appreciate that, but is, is the suggestion that you don't do any, that it's just vacant? Or can you still use it for parking?
Basically, we still can use it as parking, because there is two double garage, a double garage parking at the back through the laneway there.
So there's two cars in it, and it's just you've got a doorway so that you can walk through the garage to get out to the laneway?
Correct, sir.
Okay, and the, the variances requested about the ancillary building, they're existing conditions, because the building is already there?
Correct, sir.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Any comments? Do we have a motion? Yes, Peter?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to bring a motion. I think that this is a technicality, and it's a follow-up from the previous application that was heard last year. And, you know, by means of formalizing this exit route via the garage, is what the application is seeking to, to secure. So I move to approve this application with no conditions.
I will, I will second it, and I echo what Peter said. I think that the, the, the purpose is to make the exit independent of the possibility of getting away away.
All in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman and Board of Member. Thank you.
Okay. Number 18147 Lansdowne Avenue. The purpose of this application is to convert the existing two-unit semi-detached dwelling into a three-unit semi-detached dwelling. And we have materials submitted by the applicant. And Mr., Mr. Brander?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Committee members. My name is Adam Brander, and my address is 49 Bolton Avenue in Toronto. The architect and the agent for this application at 147 Lansdowne Avenue.
Okay, so could you just tell us about variance number one?
Sure. Variance number one looks at the interior floor area of the secondary suites as greater than 45% of the area of the dwelling. If we look at the R-zone permitted building types, we see that single-family houses, up to four units, are all permitted as a right, as well as apartment buildings. So then if we look to the, to the interior of this property, as it is two floors above grade and a basement, it would seem a unit on each floor is a distribution that makes sense for this permitted use. And the variance requested as a result of this, I heard earlier that this, this variance came up in a, in a different application. And a little further context on the variance. The former clause, in effect, indicated a minimum unit size of 65 square meters as the quantifiable criteria for adding units. And the intent behind switching to this percentage-based instead of an area-based quantification was actually part of an effort to make conversions for addition, for additional units more permissible, particularly for smaller properties, where the percentage of, of the smaller total area to begin, to begin would still be acceptable as a right, obviously still in keeping with building codes for, for unit sizes as well. So this iteration of the clause defers to, to the committee to, to recognize potentially the reasonableness of, of the unit size and the intent behind the change. The, the configure, given the configuration of the property and the overarching use of the R-zone as single-family up to four units, as well as apartment buildings, which this fits within, as well as the OP intent to provide additional housing specifically in these areas. One, one word of an alternate approach to this site would be perhaps less environmentally sensitive, would be to demolish and build new, perhaps in the, the exact same built form. And the bylaw would support this as a new construction triflex, which would kind of circumvent the technical applicability of this clause. So, so with no change proposed to the front elevation, in this approach, the intent of the OP and the zoning bylaw seem further supported by this project.
So the owner lives in one of the units?
Yeah, he intends to live in one of them.
Panel, do you have any further questions? Okay, take it into, all right, so, Yim?
Yeah, I'd like to just start. And I, I think with the contest, and this area is well, well-served, public transit, and also the new development that I should say, the apartment buildings and four plus, four places, and they're asking for 15% more for the secondary units. And, and I think of one and two, I consider them to be reasonable, and to add another affordable housing unit in the area is a, is a good thing, so I'm in support of it.
Any further comments? Do we have a motion? Yim?
I move for two with no conditions.
Do we have a seconder? Peter? All right, all in favor of the motion for approval? All opposed? All right, four to one. All right, thank you. You have your approval, sir.
Thank you.
Next one, number 19272 Queensdale Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a one-story front addition, a two-story rear addition, and a new front porch. With this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, a staff report from planning, and six form letters in support. Ms. Asquith?
Yes, hi, Heather Asquith. I'm the applicant and agent for the owners at 272 Queensdale Avenue.
Yeah. Panel, do we need a presentation on this matter?
No.
I just have a question about the one-story front addition of the applicant. Can just explain that, please?
Yeah, certainly. So the, the front one-story addition is, is essentially a replacement of the existing front porch. The difference here is that it will be partially enclosed to house a small mudroom. But the intention of the one-story addition is that it does not expand the footprint of the house, so it doesn't come any closer to the street than the existing porch did.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, it's taken into committee. Any comments, or do we have a motion? Yes, Carl?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval without conditions. I think that what is proposed here is quite consistent with the build fabric of the area. I don't have any difficulty with the variances of the manner in which they're being implemented. So I'd like to recommend, or I'd like to bring forward a motion of approval without condition.
Seconder? Peter? All in favor? Have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
And 1227? That concludes the morning list. 37. 37. Okay, so we come back at two o'clock.